Leo, do I got you? I consent to be in this webinar. Okay, so Tim's not going to be here, so we're going to just go into executive session. This is gonna, this is, this is a long list, so. All right, I am going to move to executive session of the school committee meeting of Thursday, May 27, 2021. And we will return to the regular meeting at approximately 7:00 PM. So, motion to enter into executive session to discuss issues related to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, Medfield Teachers Association, Unit A and B, and to discuss strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. And that would involve the Director of Finance and Operations, Director of Instruction Innovation, Director of Student Services, Administrative Assistant to the Superintendent, Secretary of Finance and Operations, Accounting Specialist, Payroll and Human Resource Manager, Business Office Assistant, Out-of-District Coordinator, Pre-K-12 Special Education Leader, Director of Facilities, Director of Technology, Data Manager, Network Administrator, Technology Integration Specialist, High School Principal, Middle School Principal, Dale Street Principal, Wheelock Principal, Memorial Principal, High School Assistant Principals, Middle School Assistant Principal, Director of Food Service, Athletic Director, and the Director of Social and Emotional Learning. Do I hear some?
Missed that, can you run that?
I can, Leo, but you're gonna hear it twice more in this meeting, so. Okay. Great, so. Roll call, and Leo Brown?
Hi.
And Megan Glenn?
Hi.
Anne Mae O'Shea Brooke?
Hi.
Jessica Riley? I, I will see you in the other meeting. Peace out. Call to order, we just returned, so. Good evening, we just returned from an executive session in which we discussed matters covered under exception three of the Massachusetts Open Meeting Law. First, to discuss issues related to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the discussion pertained to the Medfield Teachers Association, both Units A and B. We also met under exception two, which is to discuss strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or to contract or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. And the list of those personnel are as follow: Director of Finance and Operations, Director of Instruction and Innovation, Director of Student Services, Administrative Assistant to the Superintendent, Secretary of Finance and Operations, Accounting Specialist, Payroll and Human Resource Manager, Business Office Assistant, Out-of-District Coordinator, Pre-K-12 Special Education Leader, Director of Facilities, Director of Technology, Data Manager, Network Administrator, Technology Integration Specialist, High School Principal, Middle School Principal, Dale Street Principal, Wheelock Principal, Memorial Principal, High School Principals, Middle School Assistant Principal, Director of Food Service, Athletic Director, and the Director of Social and Emotional Learning, and after that, I may run for moderator.
Your own iPad. That's my brand.
So, um, I will now call to order this May 27 regular session of the Medfield School Committee meeting, beginning with a roll call. So Leo Brown?
Hi.
Megan Glenn?
Hi, here.
Anne Mae O'Shea Brooke?
Hi.
Tim Knight? Tim?
He might have stepped away, but we have four.
Okay. And just to let the participants, as well as the attendees know that this meeting is being recorded. When we were in executive session, the discussion under exemption two, we, the committee unanimously supports, voted to support Dr. Morrison's decision to award a cost of living adjustment to the non-union employees listed beginning on June 30, 2021. While this doesn't actually address the reality that these employees sacrificed a cost of living increase for the fiscal year 21 to prevent additional employee layoffs to be able to make the budget work last year, it will allow their salary, or their fiscal year 22 salary to be calculated for the amount it would have been if we were able to award that cost of living adjustment this year. And this cost, this adjustment has no impact on the fiscal 21 budget, so it is simply a one day, one day of the fiscal year of 2021, that the salaries have been adjusted up, but there's no actual outlay of money from fiscal 2021, but it is planned into the fiscal 2022 budget, which is the fiscal year we're entering into. So, and thank you, I have to say, to the non-union employees who did that. I know that we have felt for a very long time that most of the people who, we have all worked very hard, but most of the people I listed there have worked extraordinarily hard throughout this year without vacation, without raise, and hours, days and nights, and we want to thank you, and it's, it seems the least that we can do. So, thank you, Dr. Morrison, for bringing that to our attention. All right, at this point, I will call for public comment with the following statement: Citizens at this time may address the committee on items of school business not on the agenda. The committee will take such item and items under advisement without action or discussion at this time at the meeting at which the item is presented. And I'm going to find my participant list. There we go, okay, so if anyone has public input, we should keep public input to three minutes per person, we will not be answering questions through the Q and A, but if you would like to be brought over, you are certainly welcome. I will wait for about another minute to see if there is any public comment. All right, I do not see any raised hands. Oh, Chris McQ Potts. All right, Owen, can you bring Chris McQ Potts over, please?
Hello, how are you? Just a quick observation, do, are you saying that, did I hear this right, that you took a vote in executive session to approve non-union contract salary increases?
We did not, I'm sorry, I misspoke, we did not vote, we agreed with Dr. Morrison's decision to award those.
Okay, so is there going to be a vote in public session being taken?
We do not need to take a vote in public session, that is Dr. Morrison's purview to, to award that for that last day, especially because it has no specific financial impact on fiscal year 21.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Do I have anyone else? Okay, thank you very much, public comment is over. So the first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes for the regular session meeting on May 13, 2021, and May 17, 2021, and the policy subcommittee meetings of April 30, 2021?
So moved.
Okay, Tim, do I have yours a second?
Second, Anne Mae.
Okay. Um, so I'll do a roll call, Leo Brown?
Hi.
Anne Mae?
Hi.
Megan Glenn?
Hi.
Tim Knight?
Hi.
And Jessica Riley? I, the motion passes unanimously. And the next is, do I hear a motion to approve and retain the minutes for the executive session meeting May 13, 2021? Do I hear a second? I mean, do I, do I hear a motion? Okay, Megan, and a second?
Hi, Tim Knight.
Tim Knight, and I will do a roll call once again. Leo Brown?
Hi.
Tim Knight?
Hi.
Megan Glenn?
Hi.
Anne Mae O'Shea Brooke?
Hi.
And Jessica Riley? I, the motion passes unanimously, okay. So, now, we move-
Sorry, one, one thing, should we clarify that Dr. Morrison was not in that list of all the non-union employees, just to clarify that, that he was not part of that?
He wasn't, and it's not written on the agenda as such, so.
I just want to verbally-
Yeah, I agree.
Publicly, so thank you.
All right. He was not on that list, and we did not discuss the superintendent salary. Okay. So, high school advisory is the next item on our agenda. Let's see, we have Carrie White here, we have Carrie, do you? And then Elizabeth, let's see, do we have Eva or Catherine? Why don't have Eva come over first? Since this is her last hurrah. Hi Eva.
Hi.
How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Good, are you, you're out of finals now, right? Am I wrong about that?
Uh, yeah, seniors don't have to take finals unless they have an attendance issue, or they have below a B minus in quarter four.
See, I have not reached that yet, my apologies, I'm just not there yet. All right, so how are you? How's it going?
I'm great.
Talk to me about the seniors.
Um, so the class of 2020, 2021 is obviously very excited for a highly anticipated week for next week, there's the senior cruise, party in the park, rolling rally, and of course graduation, and everyone's been really looking forward to these events, and we're really thrilled that we have the chance to have these events as well. Overall, I say there is a lot of mixed emotions, because everyone's excited for our futures, but it's also sad to leave Medfield and our school friends, so it's bittersweet. But these next few events are going to be a great time for our grade to come together and bond for the last time before we go our separate ways. We also had prom a few weeks ago, which was a major success. I think a lot of people had kind of low expectations, because there were a lot of restrictions, and when you first hear that we can't dance, and that we're going to be separated into two groups, it's kind of discouraging. But everyone ended up making the most of it, and it was a lot more fun than everyone expected, was the general consensus, and it ended up being a really great night, so I'm really happy that the juniors will get to have the same opportunity that we had, because everyone really enjoyed it, despite everything. Also, the last week of school was really awesome, student council had a whole spirit week to honor the seniors, and even decorated the whole school on the last day, and it was really nice to feel appreciated and just recognize that whole week. And we also had a senior sunrise on the last day of school, which was something that we've been trying to do all year, we tried doing at the beginning of the year for our first day of school, that didn't work out, we tried doing it again once, we were all coming back from remote learning, and that still wasn't allowed, but fighting with the restrictions easing up, we finally got to have one, so that was nice to have that to begin the end of our last day, and then we also, administration let us out one period early on Friday, so we got to miss seventh period, and all of us had a tailgate out in the parking lot, there were like grills, and everyone was having a great time, there was like sparkling cider, so yeah, it was really fun, there's way more fun events to come, so we're all really excited, and we're really grateful to have these opportunities, for sure.
Good, I am so glad to hear that, I think that all of us are just beyond thrilled that, that things have improved to the point where these celebrations and these traditions are able to be, able to be done, you know, it kind of, it feels like the light at the end of the tunnel, it's really nice. Thank you, and thank you so much for being on Advisory.
Of course, thank you for having me.
Absolutely. Anyone else? Anything to say to Eva, we don't want to get all teary around here, but you know.
I won't cry, Eva, yeah, thank you, all the best to you and your classmates, we're psyched, some of us are coming to graduation to give that last hurrah, so thank you.
Yeah, you'll see me in the park on, Party in the Park on Saturday, because-
Awesome, can't wait to see you.
Yeah. I usually do the graveyard shift at, all night graduate, but this, this seems a lot better with my sleep schedule.
Yeah, best of luck, Ava.
Absolutely, survived, he survived a long year, so.
Yeah, for sure.
I love to hear it, I even heard, I knew about all these great things, but my daughter was a senior, I didn't hear about the senior sunrise, so.
Well, maybe, maybe she just got out before you did.
Yeah, no, I love, I love the enthusiasm, really, really appreciate it, it's great, enjoy.
All right, thank you, Ava.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, Carrie, you're here in a dual capacity.
Yes, I am. Hi, everyone, for those who don't know me, my name is Carrie White, and I'm the representative to the school committee for the class of 2022. I'll start with some exciting news that the juniors are having prom at Gillette on June 11th. Yay! This is something that a ton of us have been really hoping to have, so after like a lot of votes and discussions, we finally got the go-ahead. And I know that some of the juniors are starting to do prom puzzles, which is really fun. And that being said, student government has been super busy the past week planning for it, because it is coming up very quickly, we have about two weeks to plan it. So also this past week, student government elections were held for all grades. So as of last Monday, there is a new set of officers for the freshmen, sophomores, and juniors, and next year, Catherine Motters will be taking my position as the rep to school committee, but don't worry, I'll still be here as the StuCo e-boarder app. And student council elections are coming up next week, so many juniors are also preparing to run for their final elections of high school, which is crazy to think about, considering it feels like yesterday we were just freshmen. And then, other than that, spring sports are on a roll, and a lot of the class of 2022 are involved in a number of sports, they seem to be going very well, and the weather has also been super nice, so that's, so both of those have definitely helped boost everyone's mood. Also, the no masks outside for sports is really nice, it's really hard to breathe in a, in a mask, so that works out nicely. And then, AP exams are finished, and they went well, which was a huge relief for a lot of the juniors in AP courses, so other than those classes, the class of 2022 has been working hard finishing out the term and starting to think about finals, which will be coming up in a few weeks. What the seniors done, it definitely has been weird being the oldest in the school, but the juniors are pushing through for the last few weeks. And like I said, it's hard to believe that next year is, we're going to be seniors, and hopefully have a more normal year. I've loved being the rap for the classes 2022 for the past three years, and I want to thank you all for listening to all my speeches throughout my time, and yeah, I think that's everything.
Thank you, very much appreciated.
Thanks, Carrie.
Okay, let's see, who do we have next? Elizabeth? Come on over.
Hi, everyone. Hi, I'm Elizabeth Pansiaco, and I'm the representative for the class of 2022. Um, I'm not really sure, I kind of lost track of time, but last time I checked, I don't think we were in school fully with our last school committee meeting, but even if we were, school's still going really well, it's awesome to be, to be back, feels like normal school, it's really great seeing everyone. Unfortunately, with normal school, that does mean MCAS, so we did have MCAS for the past two weeks, but we just finished math yesterday, so sophomore class is done with MCAS forever, which is really exciting, no one likes doing MCAS, so that's awesome. Let's see, as Carrie mentioned, sports have started, which is really exciting, it definitely feels like there's a lot of spirit in the school with all the spirit days and everything, like for game days. For student government, we haven't been doing a lot, our fundraiser went well, but we've just been preparing for the rolling rally for the class of 2021, and we have our own section for, like, the class of 23, 23, to say goodbye to the seniors and everything. And elections were, did happen, I'm happy to say I'm staying as the rep for 2023 next year as well, so that's exciting, and student council elections are happening pretty soon, I think next week, I'm not 100% sure, though. And because school's wrapping up, finals is coming up, which is kind of nerve-wracking, because we did not get a finals last year, so it'll definitely be weird to have a finals, but that means school is almost over, and after this weird crazy year, I think we're all super ready for a nice relaxing summer, so thank you.
Oh, thank you, Elizabeth, much appreciate. Okay. Let's see, who do I have up next, Catherine? Catherine Vanister? She in there? Did we say she was, oh, there she is, okay. Sorry, Catherine, I actually had the hardest time seeing the attendee list without my glasses on, so I can't quite tell if you're there, my apologies.
No worries. But, hi, everyone, how are you?
Very well, thanks.
My name is Catherine Vanister, and I'm the rep to school committee for the class of 2024, I don't have too much to say, Ava, Carrie, and Elizabeth all kind of reiterated what I have to say, but anyways, student government has finally just finished up our final fundraiser of the year, we have raised over $1,000 for our flag fundraiser, we just received them in actually yesterday, so that's super exciting, and for anyone who ordered a flag, we plan to distribute them next week, hopefully in the beginning of the week, and any students who, or any parents who have a student in the high school are able to pick them up Tuesday after school, and we'll have a morning and announcement, so thank you to everyone who bought one of those. And so for school, everyone is doing really great, having everyone is, having everyone in person is just really nice, and seeing all new faces is awesome. It definitely feels different with the seniors now, and everyone's excited for all those senior events that Ava mentioned, and my student government is also setting up a spot at the rolling rally, so that's super exciting. Um, like Carrie and Elizabeth also mentioned, MCAS is coming up for my grade, and it's been going on for the other grades, so having block days was definitely different for my grade, because we've never had one before, but it was also super nice, because we finally got a schedule change, and we haven't had any of those this year, so that was super nice. And after that week, we'll have finals, and teachers are also already being super helpful, I've already gotten a few study guides, so that'll be kind of boring, but it's okay. Everyone's just mentally preparing for those, and then, like Carrie and Elizabeth also mentioned, student government elections just happened, so you'll see me again next year with Elizabeth. And then, so for sports, like Carrie mentioned, I also said that ma, having no masks is really great, and it finally feels like things are getting back to normal again, and everything's just been going really great, so that's all I have to say for tonight, thank you so much, and I look forward to seeing you all next year.
We look forward to seeing you too, Catherine, thank you.
Thanks, Catherine.
Thank you.
Okay, so that is high school advisory, however, I have a kind of a special presentation after this, three students who were in the AP civics class juniors emailed me this week thinking that I would be interested in this project of theirs, and not only was I interested, I was, I really thought that it was worthy of bringing to the school committee and to allowing people in the community to see some of the really great work that our kids are doing, and how they're thinking as kind of global citizens, and about kind of the world outside of just our kind of bubble. So with that, full disclosure, one of them is Anne Mae's daughter. But I will invite Louisa Brooke and Dia, where are you, Dia Yadapathithaya, and Hannah Johnson over to do their presentation on period poverty, which they have developed through AP civics, so we'll wait for the other two to hop over here.
Hey, girls.
Hi. I did, it's nice to see you.
Okay, um, hi, thank you so much for your time in inviting us here today, I'm Louisa Brooke, and I'm also here with Dia Yadapathithaya and Hannah Johnson, we are currently juniors at Medfield High School, and our history class required us to do a civics project this year, and our civics project is based on a global issue, but we decided to solve it at a local level, right here in our school, we wanted to let the school committee know about the changes implemented at our school. And in Scotland, they have passed the Period Products Free Provisions Bill, which placed the legal duty on local authorities to ensure that anyone who needs period products can get them for free.
Yeah, so we were inspired by this, and we decided to start this at Medfield High School, so we first contacted our school nurse, Mrs. Bennett, who provided us valuable insight into the depth of the problem of period poverty, which is kind of what we were planned on tackling. Period poverty is like a huge issue, it's where people who get periods do not have access to menstrual products, or they can't afford them, and these like period products are a necessity, and we're trying to help out these people who are not able to afford these products, so with the help of Mrs. Bennett, who provided us with the feminine hygiene products, we were able to institute our plan, so now in every girls' gender-neutral and faculty bathrooms, there are baskets filled with tampons and pads, all for free, also in the bathrooms are informational posters that speak on the Scotland Bill, period poverty, and direct people who are struggling to the nurse, so we put the nurse's contact info there as well. Louisa, do you want to share our presentation that like shows the pictures of like our baskets and our posters?
Yeah, so, um, this is our poster that we made, and as you talked about, this just gives about like all the information about like period poverty and everything, and these are up in all of the girls' gender-neutral and faculty bathrooms, and and, um, this is one of the 12 baskets that are filled up, so they all have tampons and pads in all of them.
Great.
So having all of these resources in every bathroom, not only does it allow people in our school to feel more comfortable on their period, it also relieves stress, because people don't have to worry or stress over keeping a supply of products and keeping them in their backpacks, so no one should really ever have to worry if they'll have access to menstrual products, so by providing these baskets in every bathroom, we can eliminate this worry and strive to have a future where every person has access to menstrual products. Thank you for listening, so let us know if you have any questions.
Do you, do you guys want to speak to kind of the, the role that hygiene has in blocking access to education? Because there's period poverty, but there's also, you know, like the, the role that, you know, not being able to afford to do your laundry has on truancy, certainly even in, in Massachusetts, and I know that there are many school districts that open up their washers and dryers to their students, and I know in Worcester, they have actually installed washers and dryers in many high schools, because it's so expensive, and I think that people don't realize that just what a barrier hygiene can be for people who have limited resources to be able to get to school.
Dear Louisa, if you don't mind, I'm gonna hop on this question, but kind of just talking about, um, so having like your period lot also kind of, you know, causes a lot of people to have absences from school, and so while there is a variety of reasons why they're missing due to their period, a lot of it could also just be, be because they're not too comfortable in the school.
a lot of it could also just be, be because they're not too comfortable in the school bathrooms. A lot of it is the stress of the whole taboo of having to take a product with you to the bathroom. I know a lot of like my friends and I, we always have to like go with our backpacks in the middle and, and like in between classes so that it seems like nothing's really happening.
Right. It's a universal sign of nothing's happening here.
Yeah. So by having these products and baskets in every bathroom, it might make people more compelled to attend school on days when they are on their period because they know that they will have resources in any bathroom that they go into. So they'll feel more comfortable and will also just make sure that they don't have to miss school and kind of looking like to our pre-zoom days where zooming into class wasn't an option. If people missed class, then they wouldn't, you know, they couldn't zoom in or they would have to ask their friend for notes, which isn't the same as being present physically in class. So I think these baskets kind of could help people be more present in school.
Yeah. It's great. It's a great project and I, and I like the fact that, uh, you, you three are embracing the fact that, uh, you know, pretty much 50% of the population has a period. And yet we don't talk about it and it is one of those things that, you know, we really do need to acknowledge that it is a medical necessity and that many of our, um, it's, it is a very difficult thing to fund. You know, like you don't see much assistance around diapers or, or period products. Or again, wash and, and you know, being able to kind of have laundry detergent and things like that. And it's really a large issue and I really appreciate that you, you brought it. Now, uh, did you get the posters into the men's room?
That was our next plan. So we, yeah, so that was kind of what we were doing next. First, we were like gonna prioritize like the girls' and gender neutral bathrooms. But we of course like want to make sure that men are informed on like periods and just like extra support for women and people who have periods in general.
You wouldn't want to leave them out of the education.
Right. So that's kind of our next step.
Okay. Thank you. I really just really wanted to appreciate that you, uh, that you reached out to us. And that I do think that it's something that I, I think, it really is, uh, really does bear in a very immediate way on student wellness. And I, I appreciate that you kind of took that and ran with it. So do, uh, does anybody else have comments around?
I just want to thank the girls. What wonderful job, you know, taking a real global issue and bring it to a real local solution. So thanks for doing that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, well done, girls. I'm so impressed. And, um, just a plug for there's this, uh, it's on Netflix, this 26 minute documentary. It's called Period: End of a Sentence. And it's again, 26 minutes. It's a project that was done in India and, um, it's brilliant. So.
I have heard about this project as a matter of fact, I think. I think I may have heard it on NPR, not that long ago.
And it's 26 minutes. So it's a global issue. So thanks, girls. You did awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, just wanted to say great job and thank you for sharing this and keep it up.
All right. Okay. Uh, and with that, uh, I will move on to the next agenda item. Which is, this is like a day full of like amazing, amazing things. The next thing is, uh, a music department trip. So if Dr. Marsen, you'd like to present?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Here, here's another sign of, uh, normalcy hopefully, uh, in getting back to opportunities for our students. Mr. Belik has submitted to us, um, a plan for, uh, attending, uh, the concert band, the jazz band orchestra and chamber orchestra, a total of 140 students, uh, to go to Orlando, Florida, uh, in March of 2022. Um, and they're going to be using the same travel company they've used before, World Strides, who, I don't know if you remember, but when we had to cancel the trips in 2020, they were really supportive of it and gave the money back. It wasn't like some of the other trips that in horror stories you saw on the news, uh, World Stride was really a great company to work with. So this is, uh, participation in the World Strides Music Festival um, at the Universal Studios in Disney World Park. So just really excited for the opportunity for our kids and looking forward to them, uh, to go back, going back to travel because they haven't done that in a while. So I would ask that you would approve based on the documents that were in your materials. Um, and then I can pass that along to Jason to start, uh, getting everything ready to go.
Uh, before I bring it to a vote and ask for motion, I do want to just talk about, uh, financial, the financial aspects of this in terms of, uh, how we get kids who may not be able to, you know, afford this, uh, the kind of fundraising that we'll be doing. Do you have a kind of a quick synopsis of that? Cause I know that it was in Jason's.
Sure. Yeah. So, um, because they canceled the 2020 trip, uh, the, the funds that they raised through the mattress fundraiser, uh, which was a little over $6,000 is still available to be used to offset the cost. And they're also exploring other fundraisers in the fall of 2021, uh, to give any assistance for students that need that.
Okay.
And historically, sorry, um, historically, the MMA has been very generous on music scholarships that any student who wants to go, they will make every effort to, to have that child go. So I'm, I'm so impressed with all the work they do. So now they're, they're fully supportive. And, um, another thing, I'm, you know, World Strides is so impressive because it was kind of dicey with some of the other companies and, um, you know, even their literature that was in our packet about refunds and, you know, the windows of, you know, changes, et cetera. I think this is very generous and, um, not the norm for a lot of these travel companies. So I'm just fully impressed with World Strides. So, and I'm so psyched that the kids will be able to, to go on this. I'm a huge proponent of educational travel.
Absolutely. Yeah. I think that, um, I just, uh, want to make sure that if, if there are families that feel as though they need assistance to be able to do this, that, you know, we're on it early and often that they know that there's help out there. So, um, so do I hear a motion to approve the, uh, music department trip through World Strides as, uh, included in your packet? Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved to Anna Mae.
Anna Mae, do I hear a second?
Second, Megan.
Megan Glenn. Okay. I'll do a roll call. Leo Brem?
Hi.
And Tim Knight?
Hi.
Megan Glenn?
Hi.
Anna Mae O'Shea Brooke?
Hi.
And Jessica Riley?
Aye.
And another door to normalcy. It's a great day. Okay, uh, Dr. Marsen, do you have any other items since posting on May 25th?
I do not, Madam Chair.
Okay. Then we will move on to old business. Um, Dr. Marsen, we have the DEI or Divi- Diversity Equity and Inclusion Task Force on the agenda formulation and timeline. So do you want to kind of go into kind of where we are on that right now?
Sure. So, um, information has been sent to all staff and, um, all parents on the, um, invitation to, uh, apply and submit information, uh, for the DEI task force. I think, you know, we have a closing date of, uh, June, I think it's June 10th. But I think it's, it's really important to try to get a, a broad, um, interest in this and get as many people interested as possible and put that out to everyone to try to get, um, a really, uh, you know, wide cross section of, of the community and teachers to, to participate in this. Next week, we're going to be reaching out to middle school and high school students because we want them to participate in this as well. Uh, but I think it's, it's really important, um, you know, to look at some of the, the key areas that we're going to be looking at. First and foremost, our curriculum instruction and see how we're doing in that area, really looking at, um, going beyond our, the bias stuff that we do now, really trying to get a, like a real good sense of, of what we're doing and how we're addressing some of these issues in curriculum. Um, that, that's an important piece. You know, looking at the possibility in the future of, of hiring, um, a DEI director for the district or share that with another district so that we can have experts in this area to work with us each and every day, uh, which is really critical for us. You know, looking at diversifying our workforce is something that we've been working on. It, our ads on, on school spring now, we, we put out there that the Medfield Public Schools is actively seeking to diversify their workforce. That's, that's on our advertisements now. On school springs, we really want to get folks, uh, involved. And I think once, when, once we get back to some normalcy again, we're going to partner up with other districts and, and try to get into, uh, minority, minority candidate, education fairs, which used to happen prior to COVID. And I think, um, other districts are looking to get into that, that same area. So that's something that we'll do. And then looking at what we can do professional development wise, uh, for, in workshop wise or, or speaker wise for not just teachers and students and faculty, but also the community as well, the community and the parents, I think. Really great community conversations on this and, and wherever you fall on this issue, I think it's important to have that, that open and honest communication about this. And so that's where we're looking at, um, we reached out to a couple of consultants to see if they can help us with this and really work with us through the formation and the facilitation of this TDI task force because, you know, none of us are experts in this area. And we think it's important to, to have folks come in and facilitate and help, and help us work through these. I mean, everyone, every district is at a different place with this. Some haven't started, some have been doing it for years. So I think it's, it's really important for us to, to have someone help facilitate this workforce. And it, it's also important to know, and, um, we're speaking with some colleagues today. It's really important to know that this has been an ongoing issue in our country for, you know, hundreds of years here, right? I mean, this is something that we've been dealing with. So this isn't something that we're going to have a task force for one year and everything's going to be solved. All the work's going to be done. That, this is going to be an ongoing like SEL. It's an ongoing, um, topic that we keep revisiting, revising, improving on, and try to really embed this in all the work that we do. So I see it as the same thing as SEL as, as far as, you know, getting the, the core group together, but really trying to embed it in all of our work. And it will take time. It will not happen overnight. Um, but I'm excited, excited the opportunity, um, to work on this important, these important topics with, with our community. So we'll see what, what happens, what the interest is going to be. I haven't checked the email yet today, uh, that we put on there. So we'll, we'll start checking that tomorrow and get a sense of where people are at.
Great. And I think that we can probably also, assume that, that, uh, diversity, equity and inclusion will be a significant part of what we're looking at when we're redeveloping our strategic plan.
Absolutely.
Over the next five years. And I think that, um, it really does, uh, it does kind of describe how the, the country and the world is changing in terms of awareness that this is, this issue was something that was mentioned kind of, not as a major topic of concern at that time, uh, but you know, kind of woven through some of the, the points, but it is clear now that this, that the time has come to really truly focus on this. And I think that that has been kind of a, an effort over the last five years advised, as I've been seeing kind of grassroots initiatives and more official initiatives kind of throughout the district, to really choose to focus on these issues. And now that we're able to bring it under one roof, I think, uh, you know, we'll start the stone rolling.
And I think it's, it's been something that we've done, but needs to be a more coordinated effort. And you know, sometimes, sometimes intent isn't enough, right? Intent is always great. But sometimes you need to do a little bit more than that and need to have some actionable items. I think that's what, what this group, people have the best intent, but this group needs to, as we do with SEL, you know, start to really have some actionable items and, and make some changes. So.
Absolutely.
Now, I'm very grateful that this is, is finally starting on an official, yeah, um, an official level. I know we've, we've talked about this for quite some time now. So, um, as you say, it's not just intent, but it's the impact and it's going to take a long time to, um, you know, culturally in, in Medfield and to just bring more awareness, you know, this, this past weekend, they had the anti racism vigil at, at, um, the Unitarian Church and that was quite well attended, but there were some powerful voices there and, and I'm just, you know, very impressed that this is becoming more at the forefront in, in our town. So thank you.
Absolutely. Do I have any other comments before I open this up to the public input?
I just said, I echo a lot of what Anna Mae said. There was no echo. A lot of Anna Mae said it. And, um, Dr. Marsen, so is the, is the, um, the thought that you would have almost like SEL, it's first an outreach into the community to try to find, you know, those that, uh, raise a hand as interest. And then you kind of assemble the team towards the end of the year and then start making, meeting in earnest next year?
Right, September. Yeah, September, we start meeting. So we have to see what the, what the response will be and, and kind of go off there. We're looking at, you know, getting representatives from all five schools, both teachers, parents, um, and then community members. Also, we'll try to get, you know, one of you obviously, or two of you, whatever, however we do it. But in, in, in members of the administration, I think, you know, one of the hard things is there's so many folks that are involved in this and, and that go to the merge meetings and we, we can't have everyone, right? So I think it's, it's just like SEL, we had more people than we could have in a committee that would be, you know, worth in terms of getting things done because it can't be too big. So we'll have to just go through that. And that's something that, um, Christine, Mary, Michael and I will be looking at once we get all the, the, um, the folk, the responses in.
Okay.
Sounds great.
Um, I just wanted to say that what I feel like will be most helpful is actually getting, um, like you said, there'd be representatives from each school there as well as parents from the community and, and actually having those conversations together. Kind of what might alleviate some of misconceptions about like, what is my kid talking about in school and, um, really the face-to-face interaction that you don't really get past, you know, fifth grade when you don't have conferences anymore, things like that. Um, just to clear up any misunderstandings that people have or, um, you know, just bring their feelings or their concerns out in the open. So, um, that's one step closer to getting everything out there and, uh, and working to better ourselves and educate ourselves. So, um, I think this is great.
Looking forward to it. Okay. So now I am going to open up to public comment about the DEI task force. And again, please keep your comments to three minutes and we ask you to come over. But I'll, I'll wait for about another, uh, 45 seconds or so. To see if anybody has anything that they would like to say about that in specific. Okay. So then we will move on to COVID-19 guidelines. And again, this is something that I asked, uh, Dr. Marsden to kind of, see, uh, kind of review the guidance, which has been changing rapidly, um, over the time. And then I think we should, uh, in a year of, uh, whiplash, we again have some whiplash around the end of the emergency order and the way that it impacts public meetings. So Dr. Marsen, do you want to talk a little bit about how guidance has changed things around graduation? Cause I'm not sure the entire community knows. Or things that are happening within the, uh, the schools that are impacted?
Sure. So, um, as most of us were surprised by, uh, the governor's announcement, um, that were really, instead of being August 2nd, it was really, it was moved up till the 29th of May and then all of a sudden they were saying masks weren't needed outside at recess in schools and all these things were just kind of, you know, tossed on us. And interestingly enough, it wasn't on a Friday night at seven like it was all summer. But unfortunately it was a Monday afternoon and we had, um, a, a new elementary school building meeting. We had a school committee meeting prior to town meeting. Then we had town meeting after that. So it didn't leave a lot of time to, to have those conversations with our local experts that we've counted on through this whole process. So that in terms of the mask being removed at recess and outside with phys ed and those kinds of things, really wanted to make sure that we could talk to our school physician and members of our board of health that have really been supportive of us the entire year. So we did that on, on Tuesday and Wednesday morning. And then, um, I alerted the principals that they were, it was okay to have kids outside. You know, with their mask on. But it was really just a timing issue. I know that I, I spoke to, uh, someone that works in Milis yesterday. They didn't do it to the Friday. So we're a couple of days ahead of them. Um, I know some districts didn't do it until Thursday. So you know, it was one extra day that our kid had to wear a mask at recess. I don't think it was that big of a deal, but uh, we just wanted to make sure that we consulted with the professionals that we've worked with through this whole pandemic. So that was an interesting, you know, surprise that we, we got. Um, the other piece was, uh, the, the graduation guide. So um, the updated, updated guidance came to us that is really, uh, it was really great news for, certainly for us and for our kids and our families. The first thing is student masking and distancing requirements. So when outdoors, so when the graduation is outdoors, like we have students that no lot, no longer required to wear masks and students should distance as feasible. So we're still going to have the pods of families like we, we did before, but we're able to open up the bleachers for anyone else that wants to go, wants to go to the, the graduation. So that provides really unlimited guests for the kids, but the, the ones that are, um, the core group are the, are the nuclear family on the field. That's how we're, that's what we're keeping that because we think that's an important thing to do, uh, with the guidance. Effective on the 29th, also outdoor graduations, attendees and staff are not required to wear a mask. Um, effective on the twenty-ninth, also outdoor graduations, attendees and staff are not required to wear a mask. So that's really great news. Um, but they are encouraged to distance from individuals that are not in their household. And attendees at the graduation are, that are not vaccinated are strongly encouraged to wear face cover. So um, that's again, it, it really starting to open up what we know as a regular and normal graduation. And then in terms of shared materials and cleaning, uh, we were, before we're not allowed to give graduates their diploma or any awards or anything. Um, now the updated guidance permits us to um, hand out, permits us to ha- hand out the, the diploma and award, which is great. I mean, that's a ni- a nice part of it and we'll be able to hand the awards to the kids, which is great. And then the graduation facilities only need to clean high-touch surfaces and shared objects once per day. The old guidance on that was you had to clean it immediately after someone else touched it. Uh, so now it's just that the once a day, uh, which is great. So I think it's, you know, we're getting back to somewhat normalcy in this, but we're happy that our, our kids can experience um, graduation, our families can experience graduation in that way. So that's where we are right now with the, the updated guidance. We had a meeting with the commissioner uh, late last week. Um, he is, he is bringing to the Board of Education and to the medical uh, group that will have a normal uh, regular school opening. Um, with the only thing that, that they're looking at right now is whether or not there'll be masks required, at least for the first couple of months. Uh, but right now, um, we're still waiting for that guidance because we want it, as you know, sooner rather than later. Uh, but you know, my words, not his. Uh, it seems like the, the governor's medical team uh, works at a real slow pace. It never came out of his mouth, but I'm just kind of referring from, from what they were saying. So we're just waiting for that. And we'll let parents know as soon as we hear, but we're, we're planning for a regular full reopening. No, no real restrictions, um, other than maybe mask wearing.
Well, that's practically normal. I, I hate to say the word normal so much. I almost feel like I am jinxing myself at this point. Um, and then that actually does bring us a little bit to a discussion I think that we're going to have to have about how uh, we hold our um, June seventeenth meeting. The emergency order was supposed to end entirely on June fifteenth and everything was supposed to go back to the way it was. And then shortly thereafter, the governor kind of put a hold on that and uh, said that we could continue to do hybrid meetings uh, via Zoom so that we could either meet in person and then be uh, bring people over by Zoom or whatever. I think that is kind of a dependent on what uh, the kind of local uh, board chooses to do. But I think it's also um, kind of a stopgap measure between conceivably some legislation or change around how public meetings are run that they're considering over the long run from what we've learned from um, the pandemic and kind of the increase in uh, the ability for people to participate. So um, I think that we'll probably uh, I think we'll probably have to make some decisions around that. And I'll spend some time kind of surveying each of you about what we uh, can do um, come June seventeenth. Because I know that we had thought about meeting in person and I think it would be great if we could meet in person, but um, how we then allow people to uh, see our meeting, which is participation under the law and comment. Is kind of a different thing and it's a little bit of a technical issue. But again, we're going to try to figure out how we can live stream through uh, Medfield TV if that is possible, or through Facebook or any one of these other things. The tough part is, is that uh, what happens when we meet at the library um, ordinarily or at the LMC at the high school is that uh, they have to, you know, essentially um, use the old term tape that meeting and then upload it later. So it's not able to be live. While the selectmen have a different setup and where they actually are able to, they have the technical capability of being able to live stream from their meeting room. So um, I guess we just kind of have to interface with Brett and Owen and see what it is we can do. Um, because I certainly think that the, the live watching as well as the making sure that each of our meetings are up uh, on YouTube pretty quickly. Um, has been very helpful during this period of time. So.
Could we switch our venue to the second floor of the town hall?
Uh,
where they're already set up to live stream?
So that's another thing. I don't know. I honestly just don't know. I mean, I don't, I know that they're still meeting in three separate rooms in town hall. So they've got Mike usually at the table, or at least the last one I watched like two meetings ago.
They all seem.
Wasn't it Mike? And then Pete was somewhere else or are they spread out? All right. So uh, maybe this is a, a nut we can all trying to figure out how to crack.
So I can, I can speak to Christine tomorrow and see if that's something we can look at.
I don't know that uh, would we feel comfortable having in-person uh, attendance? Because I do know that they aren't doing in-person attendance at this point, right? So they're doing in-person meetings, live stream, but I don't think that they're having participants come into the.
About the high school auditorium.
I don't think I, high school auditorium has the same, um, I thought about it, but I don't think it has the same capability of of being able to kind of automatically live stream up. But yeah.
A lecture hall in the high school, like a oversized room somewhere?
We do.
Yeah.
Room one twenty-five.
Miserable.
Oh, is it?
Well, no, it's not bad.
I was gonna say, maybe worthwhile finding a spot that gets set up for streaming for not just the purpose of our meetings, but you know, for other, other events, uh, and that could be um, you know, then strategically used for meetings uh, with technology available for things like streaming or bringing in a guest speaker. Uh, that doesn't have to be in the meeting, but can be video, you know, telecommuted in to speak to us. Um, you know, now that we've grown used to the technology and it's not one of us propped up in a Chromebook on the table. Like we, like we've attempted in the past. Um.
Really, really Leo, those were some of your best meetings. I don't, I don't know what you're.
But if uh, but if we're able to, you know, maybe outfit a spot, I, it could probably be done for a reasonable amount of dollars and be of value to the, the school for other purposes as well. So.
I have to say that the thought crossed my mind. Um, but I didn't check it with the budget, nor did I talk to Dr. Marsden about it, but it certainly wouldn't work for the seventeenth, which would be our last meeting this. Think so. Maybe we can simply uh, take a look at the calendar and see if Christine would let us um, meet uh, or if the, the space is available at the selectments. Would that be a kind of a decent hybrid for us at this point?
I'll reach out to her in the morning and.
Okay.
If it's available.
We'll try to kind of flesh out the details and um, kind of work through any of the naughty bits, you know, not K N O T T Y, not. It's not even that late. Okay. Um, so do I have any public comment at this point on any of those uh, guidelines or anything else? And again, I'll wait for about, you know, a minute, forty-five seconds for somebody to raise their hand and then we'll bring you over and please keep your comments to three minutes. A maximum. All right. Um, okay, I'm reasonably well assured that nobody would like to uh, comment right now. So um, let's move on to the new elementary school project. If uh, Dr. Marsden, you, Leo and Anna May could kind of update us on the SBC meeting yesterday. Um, and kind of the consideration of the site, uh, the impact on the project, that would be uh, great.
Sure. So uh, the SBC voted uh, last evening um, to extend the submission date um, into uh, the early fall into uh, September. Um, so that we wouldn't be doing it in June and going into an August meeting where we would be submitting in the fall and look going into an ar- late October meeting, uh, which would put uh, the special town meeting in early November. So I think there was a consensus, um, I think probably unanimous, but uh, that we want to continue to go forward with what we've done the last couple of years, the work we've done and, and choose the Wheelock site. Um, but we would, we would have some additional time to get additional feedback from, from the community um, and, and probably hold a uh, another public forum and doing it actually in person uh, in June. I think we, we penciled in June thirteenth and which is a Sunday afternoon.
Afternoon, yeah.
Do that, to do that live in person. So I think that's what we're going to be kind of working on right now, but um, Leo and Anna May, whatever else you I think is important to add.
Yeah, I think, you know, um, I'm, you know, special town me, or annual town meeting rather, you know, the vote was quite close, two twenty-nine to two twelve. Um, it was not a, a clear um, win, so to speak. I didn't, I personally, I didn't feel it was a mandate. However, I think it is important to kind of tune in to, to their reasonings and um, although um, we have put information out, maybe the committee I chaired did not do a good enough job. So we're, you know, and so we've got to kind of rethink that and um, kind of reestablish getting stuff out there more often in different ways. I think this public forum that's going to happen on the thirteenth is going to be an important um, step. You know, I think people are now engaged a little bit more. So um, but you know, that, that Monday on, at five PM, we did get some emails saying, wait a minute, folks. We're just getting home from work. We're giving food to our kids. We don't have sitters. It's COVID, you know? So there, there's a lot of facets out there, but I do think we need to just get more information out there, get folks um, engaged. I encourage people to please sign up to, to get the emails, uh, email um, newsletters. We send those out weekly and um, but you go to the medfield.net, explore and the new elementary school to get to that website. It's brand spanking new. It looks great. I think it's much improved, easier to navigate. Um, but um, I, you know, and I do have to say, and it was reiterated last night, um, I believe in the process that we've had. Could we have done better communicating? Yes. Um, but the process itself and the committee members, you know, um, these are people who are professionals in the field and um, I have a lot of respect for them and they've spent a lot of time and energy and um, they have great insight um, and learned from other projects that they've worked on. So um, hopefully we can just reiterate that or say it in a different way and um, get this information out. Sorry, it took so long.
I like the, um, I like the fact that was hosting on a Sunday afternoon. Uh, I think it's a, you know, town meeting um, on a Monday night during working people, you know, when people are working, getting home from work, kind of keep up with children. Heard tons of feedback about that um, from the community. And um, so I think that you know, the town should probably hear that and start hosting the, the our town meetings in a more accessible time, like a Sunday afternoon uh, or Saturday. Um, so and I hopefully the forum will help, you know, um, get some more people because even our meeting, all our meetings were during the week as well. You know, uh, the forums that we held over the last few years, all the meetings we had are all during the week, of course. Um, and also could be part of the, you know, the reason that some of the word didn't get out. And um, it's a lot to digest. There's a lot happening there. So um, the, so I'm excited that the forums could be on a Sunday after.
I think that um, you know, one of the hardest demographics we've always known to, to reach are the people who will also be the most affected by um, the decision around Wheelock. You know, the kids who are going to be in second grade when in, you know, the fall of twenty twenty-four are really not even in our our registers yet, honestly. And yet those are the kids who will be able to take advantage of a full campus system for those four years. You know, and, and this, this school, you know, yes, we could, we could build a pretty good four or five school pretty much anywhere. And we have great educators and, but to really be thinking as stewards of our community and our community's resources and stewards of the education of our children and maximizing that. Um, I have to say that I didn't hear anything and I have not heard anything that makes me believe that that a Dale Street location is an advantage over a, a location on a Wheelock kind of community campus. Um, just, you know, in so many ways. And you know, the point has been brought up while we aren't sure that uh, that the enrollments will be the same. And, and to that point, I, I have to say that consistently uh, Selectman Marcucci has said, you know, this school offers us an opportunity in the future to be able to combine our resources and shrink down. Should that, you know, thing that has never really happened in Medfield, which is that our population contracts so much. Um, well, then perhaps we can, you know, combine it into one or two schools at that point, but we're building the school for seventy years and we don't know what's coming down the road in ten years. You know, my, my son is in ninth grade now and when he started um, we didn't use computers or iPads in in the classroom in any grade at all. There has been a major shift in how we educate children and what we are able to do. Um, and we have to be able to anticipate that uh, in a way that almost requires us to look in a crystal ball. And I'm afraid that putting one school in one place without being able to have that flexibility across all of those uh, across both of those buildings, almost like one school. Just leaves us at a disadvantage for a very small price differential that I don't think we even accurately know at this point. And the other thing that I was, I was hearing last night is, you know, I understand that there's a a real desire to keep kind of a school in the center of town, but up until this point, I don't think I had realized that that was about that, that the proposal was that uh, we raise Dale and build another um, another building on that site. And that we kind of warehouse those groups of children who would be affected by that in different schools, you know, so that uh, this kind of other, the the group that is the proponent of Dale, or at least their representative last night was saying that they thought that they could fit you know, some portion of the kids into the middle school and some portion of the kids into Memorial. And that to me really kind of sums up this, this concern I have around not really looking at the educational aspects, but more around the kind of situational aspects of this project. And this project is not about situation. This project is about children in long-term anticipation of educational needs. So I'm very, very pleased. I have no problem slowing down the process a little bit, getting more information out there and making sure that people really understand why it is that we came to the decision that we did, because it's about kids first, then where it is, how it happens and what happens. Um, and I have no problem shouting that out further, but I'm very glad that we just did not decide to completely derail or stop um, the project and put it out for another couple of years because I, I just feel like that would be such a disservice, short-term and long-term to our, our kids now and in the future. So um, do I have other uh, other comments around this right now? I'm really looking forward to the thirteenth. And um, I think we really need to make sure that we, we get that out to the people who are really invested in this because I think it just hasn't really hit. It's always seemed so far away, right?
I just wanted to.
Anna May and her committee, the communications committee, and I also wanted to say publicly, I don't. I've heard you say it twice now, and it is not a result of you failing at your job. So, and we appreciate everything that you did. So it is, it's not, it's not a fail. What it does illuminate is that. There are ways people get their information and it's not the way in which we have been putting it out. And I know, you know, I've been trying to rack my brains to think, you know, even with the communication kind of meltdowns that we've had with the school committee this year. What is the best way that people are going to get the information, the true accurate information? And I, I know that. These discussions have happened over the last 18 months and, and we've had the testimony of the experts and we have looked into the whys and the wheres and the hows and the educational plan. But simply pointing people to the website and saying it's there, find it, you know, they're not willing to do that. There are even minutes. Sometimes those are too taxing to redo. I, I, I understand that. I.
I'm.
Information. Like even a calendar, like a, just a timeline calendar of. What it is that the process has been and maybe. I mean, I'm not saying go meeting by meeting, but several of the, the bigger key meetings. A synopsis maybe of sorts of the minutes say, you know, in this meeting, link, link below. This decision was made in a discussion regarding why it is that we feel that, say, for example, water. Would not be affected or, or the, the well protection. You know, i- it's all on the up and up and just, so there's actually a concrete place that people with very little. Very little digging can, can quickly go to, and if they want to dig more, click on that and watch that section. I, I don't know if that sounds like something that you guys agree with, but it just seems that, I mean, we, we all, nobody has time. We all have the desire to know more, but. But it's really hard to go digging for it and you just want the answer. So I was just trying to think of ways in which we can make it easier. To kind of represent the work I know that has been done. And I could see some of the frustration of some of the members and I totally empathize with it. That, you know, they kind of felt like everything they had done had lost all meaning, you know?
Also done from a, from a place of expertise. Right?
Right.
That, that many of the, a lot of the input that we've, we've heard has been like, but this would be educationally better and I. Or that this would be better for the town long-term.
Reason either.
But. Where that knowledge is coming from. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And I, you know, I think that there's a, a really, there probably is even more than just getting information. This is going to be kind of a. This is going to be a hand-to-hand community meeting, friend-to-friend informational. You know, kind of. Project. So we, so, so we have all of this additional time. To be able to really now make those really intense personal connections around this and to be able to kind of get people. To understand what's going on by using Instagram or tweeting or whatever. If, if, you know, that's something that the SBC has decided to set up as part of their subcommittee. You know, really using the social media that, you know, I think that. Facebook is not necessarily used by. A really significant portion of people anymore because it's kind of become irrelevant. It's become an unpleasant place to argue.
No, but it is a place where.
So it's a place, but it's not the primary place.
I have to, I've always said that I'm out. I can't deal with Facebook, you know?
I can't either. I hate it.
Time suck. I find it toxic.
Yeah. And I think a lot of other people do too. There's.
Have to, we have to admit that that is where people are getting information. So we just have to figure out how to manage that because that in it of itself is a full-time job. I mean.
Oh yeah, no kidding.
No.
Yeah, there's no way.
People serving on the communication subject. We're volunteers. We have jobs. We have children. We have lives. So to.
I don't want to have to, don't recreate the wheel.
Yes, no, exactly.
Let's just present it in a different format.
No, you're, you're absolutely right. And thank you for saying that originally, Megan. I appreciate that, but.
We all believe it. I mean, just can't believe when you, when you say that, you know. How much effort has gone into all of this?
You know, but you know, anyways, we're moving forward. We've got better information now. We're kind of, you know, I, I, we just choose to choose. To see this challenge as an opportunity and we hope that there are enough people in town. Who with open hearts and open minds will take in information that we put out there. So.
I tend to agree. Again, I, you know, I've, I've watched a part of it, but I think the communications continues to get better and better. The aspirational goal, like this, the process includes. You know, very important meeting with the citizens in June. Right? Aspirational is everybody's, you know, come November, we're all making decisions based on common set of facts. We don't have that today, right? And that's okay. That's part of that process as well, but let's, let's at least. Think about that as, hey, that's what we want to make sure is out, is out there. We have to do. A better job of continuing to. There are some, you know, real little levels of details. That may not make it up there and it shouldn't, you know, but we do have to figure out, okay, what, make sure we're, we're working real hard for that forum in June. These are the facts. These are some of the factors that did drive a decision or a recommendation on a site. And making sure, you know, again, we, we want to clarify, we want to re-ask and make sure. You know, it's, it's very accessible. I did think that the new website is, is phenomenal. Hey, like I, I was, as I've been researching, I've been going back, hey, what happened in that design session? That I was in, you know, the, that information is out there, but you're right. You, you have to be willing to go look. But, um, you know, I do, I think it gives us the opportunity to. Start continuing to, to, um, make sure that we have the best, we're doing the best we can. That is, you know, everyone's going to vote on, or as many people in the town as we, you know, we hope a great deal of people will come and. Vote yes or no, and just make sure we, we have the, you know, best information to us, available to them.
So. Anyone else want to say something before I open this to public comment? No? Okay. Again, I'm going to ask you to leave your comments to three minutes at max. And. Have at it. Okay. I do not see any public comment. So I'm going to close that. So the next item on the agenda is donations. Dr. Marston?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we have three donations. I'd ask you to approve the following donations. Thirty-four, $34.30 to the Blake Student Activity Account from Box Tops for Education. $80.80 to the Memorial School Activity Account from Box, Box Tops for Education. And $26.10 to the Dale Street Student Activity Account from Box Tops for Education. I ask you to approve as presented.
All right. Do I hear a motion to approve as presented? All right. We'll let Leo have that one. Anna May, would you, would you like a second?
You lose it, Brooke.
All right. It is only 8:18. We're not allowed to get loopy yet. All right. So let's take a vote on that. I'm going to do a roll call. Leo Brem.
Hi.
And Tim Knight.
Hi.
Megan Glenn.
Hi.
Anna Mayo Shea Brook.
Hi.
And Jessica Riley. I, the motion passes. Thank you very much for presenting those to us, Dr. Marston. And. Uh, if I could just remind people out there in TV land that. The Box Tops for Education now has an app and you can simply take out your phone and snap the top of wherever, whatever it is that you have bought. And it will go right to our schools, which allows us to have those. Most of the time that cash goes into a gift account, which allows us to do things like buy that. Extra gift certificate for a kid who may need one for a book fair or. Take that little piece of petty cash to be able to get something for a student or those small things, those little bits of, of. Of helpful wiggle room. So please snap away. I think I did not realize until the. Until a lot of our programs that we used to be able to use for that, like script went away. So. Okay. So we have actually gone through our agenda. Do we have any informational items?
I just wanted to call your attention. We have the final two letters from Desi and the complaint determinations. So the final two, I know we, we've got a bunch into the end of the year and then putting them in your materials. So the final two are in there.
Okay. And the final two are again, that they have dismissed.
Correct.
Correct. Okay. Okay. Does anybody else have any informational? Items that they would like to put out there right now? And, and I would be willing to tell you that this is our last meeting before graduation. So.
I just want to share that rolling rally, they're still desperate for volunteers. So please, please, please help. It's, it's great fun. It's great fun to either chaperone during the party or to set up, clean up, you know, your kids can come help to do the setup cleanup, not chaperone, but. Anyway, it's just a.
Do we know where we can find that, that link to be able to fill out the Google or the, the?
Well, it's.
Whatever.
Newsletter. It's on Facebook. It's, I'm, I reckon it's in the Thursday packet for the, the younger schools. So. It, it, yeah, please.
I've been doing it for three or four years now and. I have to say, if you are a parent whose kids have not hit high school yet, or if you are not quite there yet. The. It, I do it almost selfishly at this point because it is such an amazing thing to see what. What your seven-year-old may look like. In 10 years and you can't even understand how that could be true, but it's really, uh, it's a great experience. It really is. And this year during the day. Lucky ducks. So I'll be back doing the graveyard shift next year. Fingers crossed, but this year during the day would be very helpful. So. And Leo's going to be out there with his truck, right?
Little black truck out there picking up tables or something.
Yeah.
It doesn't die somewhere.
Signed you right up, mister. Okay, anybody else? You want? Tim?
No, I just say thank you. I'd say to at least on the Zoom, Dr. Marston, Michael over here, but. I have a senior graduating and I thank you to the Medfield Public Schools. For, for the entire, the entire period. We're, we're so excited for her. I'm also just fun just to see some of her classmates today. It, uh, somebody said it earlier, it goes so fast. But I think it's, it's just, I think this is a good time to end. It's nice. Everyone's in school right now. I, I hope things continue. And a big thank you to the schools.
Right. Wash your hands, cover your nose, get vaccinated.
Yeah.
Don't be dumb. And then we'll be okay.
Microchip really helps my cell phone signal. I can tell you that.
All right. Well, if anybody wants to see the rest.
Michael laugh at least once during a meeting. I have not done my job.
Right. Motion to adjourn. Can't do it yet. Still out. All right. We do have future agenda items. We will do an end of year learning assessment update with Dr. Power because we've been trying to make sure that I thought that it would be important to. Bring Dr. Power in to talk about kind of where we've seen student learning through the year. And what we need to focus on for next year and how, how well or kind of where their challenges. So.
Tell me he was doing the star test. So I was excited about that.
We will also have end of year updates from the PTO, MCP, ECPAC and MMA. And if any of you are members of those organizations and panicking right now. Don't, I will. Get in touch with you and also you could submit them in writing if you wanted to do that. Or not at all. We just are happy to hear from you and see you. The 2021 retiree recognition. We do have people retiring this year, many of whom have touched my family and my kids. So. Bittersweet every year. I do have to say that I think my kids cleared out at least four of their teachers last year. And we tried to take that personally. We will also do an update on the MASC policy manual project update. And you guys are having a meeting next week. Kind of circle back. And then we'll do student feedback. In. August, probably. But we'll discuss that in a minute. So the next meeting is on June 17th, 2021 at 7:00 PM and. We would like to meet in person, but we will figure out how to get other people to participate and make that loud and clear before then. And do I hear a motion to adjourn? All right. You can't all actually do it. All right. Who is it? Megan, you get it. Megan. Second.
Second.
Leo. Okay. And roll call. Leo Brem.
Hi.
Tim Knight.
Hi.
Megan Glenn.
Hi.
Anna May O'Shea Brook.
Hi.
Jessica Riley. I, I have to say, I would not mind getting rid of the roll call if we do continue to go in hybrid because this takes a while. But the meeting is adjourned at 8:26 PM. New record. And thank you very much for your participation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ciao.